Greetings and welcome back to My Time at Portia. I'm Katherine of Sky and hopefully we will get mail in the mailbox today. If not, that's okay too. We didn't. I feel like, oh my god, what are we doing? Oh man, oh man. Let's gather some stuff, say hi to Pinky the cat. Hello Pinky. Nice. How much relationship do we have with Pinky the cat? Okay, we've got some people who love us, some people who just know us. Pinky! I have given you so much love, and you have only a slightly partial star. I wonder if the people I have bigger stars with are ones that I've done quests for? Yeah, I think so. Alright. This is our routine now. Saturday. Saturday, we could do the chicken run. Cool, yeah alright, well let's try that. After we get our commission, we'll run down to the chicken farm and see what's up. Alright, we need to keep up ahead of times here. Let's look at the bees first. First scarves, no. Four umbrellas, no. Oh my god, the crystal necklaces are back. Two wooden bridge heads. Yes, I will take that. Seems weird, but it gave me the most reputation and the most money, so we're gonna go with that. What do we need for wooden bridge heads? Let's just check this real quick and see if we have to set up anything to start. No, we don't need anything for it. We got everything we want, let's go check the chicken run and see what's going on here. Is there anything on the map? Somebody said to look for the little znok over either Sophie's head or Emily. There's somebody in the field over there. Yeah. Hi, hi Emily, how you doing? Wonder what I can do to help her, I don't know. Alright Emily, you are not the one we're looking for apparently. There's grandma. See if we can help her at all, there's Sophie. Yeah, I've seen her just a moment ago. Okay, nobody has a quest for me, maybe I just need to pick it up somewhere else? Somebody said that they found her along the roadside with a znok over their heads and that you should kind of look for that. She's not doing much, I'll look and see if she has a znok later. Alrighty, so we need, let's go and just get this going. Wooden bridge heads, yeah, we need two of these guys, we need, let's see, five planks and bar, and six bars, so we'll get these guys out. This should be plenty of copper bars and we can get our planks here. Glad I've been making those extra hardwood planks, oh my god, I have a million of them! Whoops! And I've completely forgotten what else I need, isn't that nice? Alright, let's just try this for now. Copper pipes, that's what it was. It's not letting me do anything but copper pipes at the moment. So we'll just go with those. Eight. Okay. Well that's it, oh I don't need bars, I needed just the pipes! Wow, alright. These are like the easiest thing ever to make. I highly recommend this as a an item, geez. Okay, so that's all done, let's go ahead and retrieve this stuff. We'll get more glass made. One day, we will need a lot of glass. 10 hours left on this furnace. Okay, stone bricks. Um, let's just have this make. Building rods, sure. Don't know what they're for, but people tell me, "Later, you will need them later." Alright, carbon steel bars. Oh, not enough wood, okay. Gotta get our wood out, for sure. Hello wood, we have no wood! Oh my god, uh, this is bad. It's like, oh my goodness, what happened to this? We have no wood. Let's go here, put a bunch of stuff away and find the wood. Um, we're gonna go and craft, so I think. Just make as much as we want, maybe down to 100 hardwood. Probably should go and pick up some from the wood farm as well. Make that a stop on our journey today. Okay, now we should be better. Life should be better. Okay, good, 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 good. You're making carbon steel bars? Good. This one was making charcoal. Alrighty, nice. It only takes 6 hours to make that full load of charcoal, which is very nice indeed. More carbon steel bars, get them all done. We're short of charcoal, that's not great. Okay. You know what, I could have this guy making charcoal instead. Oh whoops. Charcoal. Sounds good to me, alright, steel plate is getting made here. Yeah, let's make it all, go for it. Alright, and our last one. Okay, good, we got stuff done. Alright, sounds good. Uh, let's just put, um, extra stuff away and send our bridge head to where it needs to be. I feel like we could probably go dungeon, not dungeon diving, but mining again today. Alright, who needs these bridge heads, let's find out. Ahah, the Commerce Guild, imagine that! Yes, the Commerce Guild. Uh, let's go, let's go mining, or go to the tree farm first. Okay. Portia Tree Farm. Let's pick it up. Did it pick up? Nope, take. There we go. Aw, I don't like that it erases the numbers on the screen. Drat. Aw. Just gonna look at it, but then, yeah. Anyway, we're gonna gift these bridge heads to the people who need them. I probably have too much stuff in my inventory to go to the dungeon, but that's okay. I'm not bothered, oh my god, Antoine is sitting in a different chair this time! Imagine that! Alright. Excellent, we got money, 1,000 money and 200 reputation points, that's really good. Really good, I'm happy about that. Probably need to check into those, like, oh, we can't see it from here, I was gonna look into like jewelry box stuff. Alright, let's go to, yeah, we'll keep on going to this mine here. That's just fine. Yeah, 200 goals for a weekly pass. Kind of forgot how much money I have altogether. We have, okay, 11,000, which is nice. Okay, let's get our pickaxe out and find... We could go to where we were. If we can find where we were at any point. Or we could just go for a new place. There's a plate, there's one here. Power stone. Okay, what's in this room? There's a couple that way, there's one there. Power stone again. Very nice. Just digging for copper a little bit. Okay, let's go for that one down there. See what we can find. Hello, little prize, it's kind of like a prize you would get in a cereal box. Do they still do that by the way? Now this is interesting, they didn't show me any of these before. Just showed me there was one there. So it's kind of deceptive when you're trying to look for a field of many of these things. Or at least some of these things. Okay, next. Go to this one, next, like little, it's like following little stars in the sky, constellations. Nice. Nice, I like digging through copper. This is good stuff, power core, power stone again. I guess if I had been doing like hardwood planks the whole time, I would have really appreciated the power stones more and probably would have gone more often to get them. I think I would have. Though now I have the mining bonus, which is very nice indeed, so I'm not looking the gift horse in the mouth or anything, just kind of analyzing and thinking about stuffs. Okay, let's go to this one maybe. It seems like there was this huge cluster and then I, I wonder if I went the wrong direction or something. Okay, old parts there. Okay, we can go for this one, it's a little bit up. But I'm happy to dig upward, it's all good, if I can, haha, stay in the right spot and not fall down. Okay, old parts again. I'm only here for the power stones, don't you know that game? I really want them. Getting some nice copper even though we're not really digging for it. I feel like those double drops may indeed be affecting my stuff here, my loot. I could go for this one maybe. This looks like a... This looks like somewhere we've been before! Geez, old parts, wonderful. Ah, this is the place we don't want to be at. Right next to the entrance. Maybe we can get through here, just be done. No, this is the one inside it, isn't it? That I couldn't get to before. Is there like a way I can get back to this? No. I wonder if this is one of those, like, you'd have to dig below it and underneath it and go up inside it? Or some craziness like that? Um, I'm not gonna do that though, I'm gonna go back to the, um, the ruins entrance. Alright, here we go. Oops, I turned on the thing too early. Let's try going this way. Okay, there's this, a thing that's way, way out. It's a power crystal, nice. Is that leading to another chamber? I think it is, let's, let's go back down here and then turn on our scanner again. Is there stuff around us? Ah, there's one thing, okay. Here we go. Old parts. I'm going back in the wrong direction again, I feel. We're gonna end up by that darn entry structure once again. Leather sofa? How nice, oh, that's cool. Alright, I will take this leather sofa and sit on it. I haven't found a leather sofa probably since my first time in the mines, like, first episode of the game. Dang. That's nice, I'm glad that they're still in here. The sofas. Okay. Now are there any? Ahah, there's one there, or there's one there actually. Let's get that one instead. It's a lot closer to us. Power stone, boom! There's one, ooh, here we go, we found a bunch now. Or a couple, anyway. No, we only have 10 strikes, 10 stamina left. Ah, and that's it. Do we have any stamina food that we could burn? HP, stamina, okay, let's eat one of these. I guess it's 41, that's quite a lot actually. Man, I need to make more of those dried apple slices, those seem like really good. Okay, old parts. Where's our next conquest? Hello? Oh, there it is. It's right beneath me. Old parts. Okay, there's that one there. Okay, 11. Okay, old parts again. We'll just get the rest on this lovely copper here. And that's it, alright, M.P. Yes, here we go. And we're gonna head back home, what do we get in this nice hall? Wow, we got quite, well, I don't remember how much copper we had before, I'm sure we had some. At least, we got a ton of stone, lots of sand, my goodness. And we'll be making plenty more of those stone things, we got 5 power crystals. So that's something, I guess, that's a good thing. Paying 90 gols for them is so expensive. I don't know, it seems, I think it's probably better just to go to the mines because you get a lot of other stuff with you. Uh, some decent amount of ore and some other things. Actually, I could. Let's spend the rest of, let's buy another, let's use one of these guys. Okay, and we wanna go with our 3. Might as well chop these things down while we have the daylight for it, well not daylight, but the time to go around. Oh, is that a bloodstone? Excellent! Okay, 8, let's eat another one of these. Oops, did I eat it? No, okay, there we go. I wanna be careful so I don't waste those apple slices. Another bloodstone, excellent. I feel like, if you're playing the game casually, um, like on YouTube, I tend to rush with things because I feel like people want to see new content, they want to see new stuff, different things. Um, so I kinda try to provide a variety of things, but I think if you're playing the game just on your own, you probably should have a weekly round of chopping all trees and chopping all rocks until you have whatever it is necessary that you need. Um, because I feel like I haven't spent enough time doing that for myself, so that would be kind of... Oh, charcoal, charcoal, no, oh, I was gonna replace the charcoal, shoot! And I got the wrong one! That's unfortunate. Alright, let's see what is for us in the world today. See what we can do. There's mail! What is going on with the mail? City Hall? Okay, 7pm sharp, this is what I've been waiting for, guys. This is what I've been waiting for, a way to help the town and get things going. Alright, we need, this is charcoal. Okay, good. This was welding rods. So I'll just make more of these. And these, glass needs to be done. Any more charcoal? Here's another charcoal. Okay, and we're gonna go. Because we're already late, well not lately, but hopefully we'll get there on time to beat higgins to the door. All those girls, so funny, they're walking together, so cute. Alright. What I could do is I could put all the charcoal on one side if I wanted to, oh, it's Sunday, isn't it? Yep, it's Sunday. Whoops, he doesn't come on Sunday. Or at least not early. Fiber cloths. 3 bronze plates. 2 jewelry boxes. 5 glasses, this is 100, 180. Alright, 3 bronze, bronze plates, it is, and it's a research center quest, okay. He couldn't have been in here in the 4 minutes that I missed, could he? I hope not. Yeah, I feel like the beginning of the game was like a blur and now I'm, I have much too much time to myself. Okay, alright, let's get all these other things going, carbon steel bars. Up, up, up. And... Welding rods. Look at this, already 2 things of charcoal made since I was out. It's like, definitely worth dealing with. I hope I have those bronze plates, let's just make sure of that. Oh, this was charcoal, okay. Not enough materials, oh, we need iron ore, okay, let's go back to our box. Grab all the iron we need. Get some of this out of our way as well. Okay, sort all this stuff. Um, these guys go in the next thing. Those go with fabrics. And these go in their own thing, that goes in its own thing. That one goes over there somewhere. And we can put sand in here. Actually, let's put 500 in here. This can be sold. We don't even need anything with this. These go together. Let's just make sure we have those 3 bronze, bronze plates, oh, we do have some, okay, good. Those can go there. Let's get 3. And so we are prepared. Good. And this goes, this has gotta go back in its box as well. Okay. Um, yeah, let's just put other things away, these guys can go here. Ooh, we have some of this in here, you know what, I'm gonna take this from this storage because I noticed I had some in here. And I'll put it in the other one. Okay, do we have any regular wood in here? I don't think so, I think we just have hardwood. We've been using all the regular wood um, for crafting, it seems like. Okay, this is, uh, not there, okay, great. Put the parts in here, oh, I wish we had like storage containers worth 500 or a quick stack button or something like that, would be really nice. Okay, and then the rest we just convert and we have a sofa now. Alright, we're gonna make millions of stone stools again. 1402 stone. That's a lot of, um, stools. Jeez Louise. What do we need for these pigments, rainbow flowers and nieter? Okay. Keep on going with this. I hope they don't run me out of town for like overmaking stone stools. This, this feels like a very real fear at the moment. Okay, those are gonna go out, um, these I can sell. Should I put this couch in my house? I'll just put it in my couch, in my house. I don't really have anywhere else to put it other than... Let's put it here. And we'll take up the other one later. And put it the right way around, I keep forgetting to do that, not that it's that important. Um, yeah. Anyway. Is there any stones to chop? I will be looking for them, looks like there aren't any, it's mostly trees on this side. I think there's some along the further wall beyond the gate, if I remember rightly. Oh. Getting miscellaneous items, excellent. Getting some herbs, what does herbal tea do again? 25 HP, okay, that's something. It's not a lot, but it is something. Could use definitely some more plant fiber. Alright. Now the bronze plates, oh, they actually go to Petra, don't they? I think they do, yeah, okay. Alright Petra, how are you doing? Here. Alright, get on with the research then, fantastic. Let's research. Oh! I see! Okay, so you can speed up progress if you have power stones, that's pretty sneaky. Um, I don't think I'll do that, I really want to go to the, the town meeting tonight, see what's going on. Do you want to sell these items though first? Okay. Great, sell this. Sell all of these things. And more and more of these things. Sold all these stone stools. Good, well, we, we have some stuff now. So I'm fairly happy about that, I guess. Okay, cool. Uh, you know what, five power stones would speed it up. Yeah, let's do it. For five hundred bucks. It's, it's worth it, I think. Because we just sold all of that stones into the stone stools, which was, I think, well, probably two-thirds yesterday's uh, mining. Um, which is just a bunch of stone. Petra, hello? There you are. Hi. Oh, whoops. Nope, oh, there you go. Give her. Uh huh. I feel like the rich, the rich person here just like, yeah, I'll throw you some power stones, get it done. It's interesting, okay. So, seven o'clock is nineteen on the clock there. So I think what I'm gonna do is I'm going to go and collect stuff. Wanna collect probably some plant fiber from like, these trees, I think they're from these, are they? Yeah, these have plant fiber. So, and then the rocks, of course. Let's also get rid of these beetles. Mister Ladybug. Okay. This is number three, pickaxe. Wow. Okay, I was just thinking, ah, these, these kind of gray stones, they're not the advanced ones, they're not gonna have anything good. Yeah, they do, they have stuff. Mostly I'm looking for those bloodstones, power stones. I don't think these are gonna have crystals, but that's okay, we can, we can wish and hope. The ones on the island will have the crystals, but I'm hoping that our crystal trees start growing shortly. Okay, we got topaz. People have been, um, I've read on the forums, they give topazes gifts to people. But I don't wanna give him his gifts, because I'm thinking, what if we need him for something? Like some mystical uh, gadget that we have not yet invented. Need plant fiber. Yeah, I never thought I would ever run out of plant fiber, and I'm selling plant fiber, you remember? Man, oh man. And now I'm actually hunting it down actively. How things have changed, how far have the strong fallen? No, I'm just kidding. We haven't really fallen, we're pretty good. We've just been getting all this stuff done and trying to do our best. Now we seem to have a decent amount of money. Uh, not enough to feel really comfortable about buying the house upgrades and the land upgrades. I mean, the next wood upgrade is fifty thousand at uh, the tree farm, so that's kinda like, wow, that's a lot of money. Okay, so we need probably an hour to get back. Well, actually, maybe not an hour, because we have the DD. Okay, it's now three o'clock, okay, I have time. I, I thought it was seventeen, not nineteen, but it's actually nineteen. There we go. Okay, let's get out with the regular axe. I do like this game, though, it's very relaxing to play, it's very fun, and just like, yeah, just kinda putter around, do stuff. We are getting a nice amount of marble. Um, I need to look into those jewelry boxes again, because they are getting me quite, they're, they're offering them to me fairly often uh, at the commission, and I, I think they have marble in them, I don't remember exactly what they have in them. But if they're workable, then we could start producing those instead of some of the like, higher value items. Well, not instead, but in case there's nothing better, I could at least know that I knew how to make those things and stuff like that, so. Okay, it's seventeen, just about. So I could probably cut down this tree, oopsies, need the two to do that. Okay, and we need to go to the town square. All right, so let's just do that then, um. Wow, twenty-nine minutes is a long time. Dang. All right, let's see what's going on. Where am I? Oh god, I never recognized that door. Okay, we're here, an hour early. Can talk to people, say hi, hello? Cool, all right. Hey, Albert. Cool, we'll just get our relationship up a little bit with these people while we wait. Oh, that's right, we can't uh, get better relationship with Higgins. That's so funny, he's in love with Doctor Zoo. Oh, too funny. All right. Okay, cool. All right, so hey, Miss, um, Ma- Mayor Gale? Let's talk to you, chat. I didn't know Gus was his son. I kinda forgot that, oh well. And here's Gus. All right. Such a funky name, Gus, like a gust of wind. All right, so. Let's wait, let's figure this out. What do we, what did we get for today? Got a bunch of stuff, didn't we? Some nice items, for sure. Just put them where they go, this goes with that stuff. Pretty nice haul, in general. I think it's really good, this can probably be sold. Oh my god, we have so much more stone now. Good lord. Oh, there's Ginger. She's very cute. Okay, nice. Like, if I talk to Toady or... Okay. Rock, paper, scissors. Cannot play rock, paper, scissors here? Maybe it's too informal of a game. In any case, I do not wanna go anywhere because we don't wanna miss the meeting, because maybe my total lack of stuff to do is because I missed the meeting. I figured they, they told me about the, you know, the slime stuff, whoa. Okay, so that's Ak. I still think he's an alien. I don't like this one bit. I don't know, what if he goes crazy? He looks so cool. I'm not sure what to feel about this. I'm gonna trust Gale on this. Welcome, everyone. So glad there are more folks joining us today than usual. Hey, is that a dig at me? Since you're all here for a singular reason, without further ado, let me introduce our newest citizen, Mister Ak. Careful with self-introduction, Mister Ak. Hello, I like to cook. Thank you. Okay, like I stated in the letter, I hope everyone can welcome Mister Ak with open arms. Some of you might be apprehensive about a living relic roaming in our city. I just hope you all give him a chance. Mister Ak has stated that he wants to work here as a chef. Now Mister Lee, Minister Lee, has something more to add. Mayor and I have had a long talk over the fate of this AI relic. I shared with him all of our concerns in allowing such a dangerous relic to live in our city. But the mayor was adamant that Portia and the Alliance of Free Cities are all founded by outcasts, castaways, and refugees, and that we cannot in our good conscience turn away Mister Ak. On this point, I agree. However, we did come to an agreement that Mister Ak will live with the civil corps for the foreseeable future, for his own protection and ours. In time, I'm hopeful that Mister Ak will be fully incorporated into our society. Thank you, Minister. Now, if anyone has any issues with my decision, come and see me and we'll talk it through. That's all, thank you for coming. Okay, what? That's it? Mister Ak? There used to be so many AI walking around. It's kind of lonely to be the only one here now, what happened? Can I give you, I'll give you something, I wanna give you a topaz, can I give a? Thank you very much. Okay, it only gave him one. I have no quests to do. I have no quests, no game. You can't leave me like this, questless and alone. Oh, the sadness is real. Oh my goodness. All right, let's go... Go down here. Ah. Just like, no! Why you do this game? I need stuff. All right, let's keep on our rock. Make rock splitting spree here. Especially getting those crystal rocks, that would be very important to us. Especially since it seems like there's only two now? Hmm. Nope. Yeah, they give three, that one gave me three crystals. And it's just very, very little amount of this stuff. Whoops, does this one not? Oh, it does fall, okay, there it goes. All right, couple of power stones, that's nice. I should also get some apples, because these apple things are really useful. Just spamming A. Man, this, I, I still, I'm not really happy with this balance of stuff, you have to kick so much for... I don't know, I just don't feel like it's enough apples. So much stamina wasted on those things. Okay. Get back to our this thing. Oh, that's just decoration, I think. Don't need that. Um... Okay, let's go back to our... I should go also back home. See if I can get the DD over here to go. Nope, stopped, jeez Louise. So it looks like it stops at least before one o'clock. Try to chop a couple of extra trees as we go along. Getting less plant fiber than I really want. Okay, and three stamina left. Take that one. All right, charcoal especially first. Okay, these guys are... Ow, welding rods. Let's make this one make charcoal. We still have plenty of fuel at the moment. Okay, get our glass made. Basically, just get everything sorted out again. Oopsies. Okay, good. Um, that's right, we need carbon steel bars. Couldn't see what I was doing there for a minute. Yep, and even with all this charcoal we're producing, it's still not enough. Um, okay, let's get some steel plate made. And this one will get some bronze plate made. And we'll add one power stone. Oh no, we got seven crystals, not seven power stones, how silly of me. I think we're gonna leave this for now, I don't think we actually need any more of those things, we're just gonna save our fuel for now. Leather is completed, nice. Oh wow, items are being left on the ground, that's not ideal. Okay, so we have a few apples to put in here. All right, let's go ahead and put that back so we can get it sorted. Okay. That's not the right one, I wanted to go to this one, thank you. There we go. And these tea leaves can probably start, once I get like a hundred, then I'll start brewing them, I think. Okay, this needs to be crafted. Spines go here, oh, meat, I forgot to put in the other one. Crystals, plant stuff, no. All right, this has these guys, though. And meat goes in the other one, anything else that goes here, the leather. And the other was fur and plant fiber, okay. Let's get that being made. Okay, there's some lag for some reason, no idea why. Okay, so we're gonna, let's refuel this with one stone. Okay, finished goods, let's put all these nice finished stuff in here. Welding rods, these are crystals that go probably with these guys. Yeah, and the rest is just stuff. All the stuff, lot of stuff being made. Okay, looks like that needs to come back to the sail pile. Whoa, I forgot that these guys were in the wrong pile there. Okay, and go to this one. And I'm like hurrying around, just trying to get everything organized here. There's a lot of stuff, I guess I could even start making products and just sell stuff in the marketplace if I really wanted to. Get food thing. That one goes there, we need to make something with the meat. Because we're not really using it at all. Get dried apple slices sorted out. Okay, nice. Oh, there we go, falling over. Anyway, uh, that seems like a good place to stop this episode. Thank you so very much for joining me. Take care of yourselves and each other, and I'll see you next time.